Not already done so, and we're gonna start with our invocation by our planning board, commission member and bishop, a lot of titles, Anthony Slater with Tahilia Church Ministries, and then we'll do the pledge of flag. And I understand there's a scout in the back? Is there a scout back there? I can't see that far, but if there is. So after the prayer, after Bishop Slater does the prayer, if you'll come up and help us with the pledge allegiance, okay? Is that cool? All right. All right, please stand.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight, Lord, as we come together with a meeting of the minds, bidding and doing your business, God. Father, we ask you, Lord, to watch over even the citizens of Goldsboro, watch over this esteemed group of men that are here, God, to lead us in the right direction. Father, we ask you, Lord, for guidance, and we thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Okay, young man, come on up. How are you tonight? That is not a good answer.
Nervous now, nervous now.
I know you're doing better. Why are you nervous? Don't be nervous. Everything's good. What troop you with?
Ten.
Ten? Now where's that?
Providence.
Okay. All right.
That was my old troop.
Well, we're glad you're here. We appreciate you coming tonight, okay? All right, you ready to pledge? You gonna lead us? You ready? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you got the floor, you wanna keep talking, or? All right. Thank you. Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Here.
Mayor Joseph Hagan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Hayton?
Here. I think Councilmember Foster has gotten tied up in a traffic accident or something like that, so we, I don't know if he'll be coming or not, but I know he did call in and say that he had gotten tied up in traffic. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from April 25th, April 30th, May 7th, May 21st, and May 22nd for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next, we have presentations. The, Mr. Allen, are you here?
Allen Lewis.
Yes, sir. Where are you?
I got you. Okay, I can see you now. I wanted to make sure you were here.
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna read this, then you get to come up, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. I gotta get it, I gotta open it where I can read it. All right, so resolution expressing appreciations for service rendered by Allen Lewis as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 21 years, whereas Allen Lewis retires on July 1, 2018, as a senior firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 21 years of service. Allen began his career on April 2, 1997, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department in the city of Goldsboro. On June 24, 2015, Allen was designated a senior firefighter with the fire department, where he has served since retirement. Allen has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration in respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, whereas the mayor, the city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Allen their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, being resolved by the mayor, the city council, and the city of Goldsboro that we, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Allen's tenure with the city, we offer Allen our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official message of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force of effect from this, the 25th day of June 2018. Well, come on up, Allen. First, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I'd like to thank God first for giving the opportunity. I'd like to thank the city of Goldsboro for giving the opportunity to do this job, and I'd like to thank my coworkers and everybody I've worked with. When I say thank, it's been fun, it's been real. But not a lot of people on the way.
First off, we appreciate you 21 years of service.
Yes, sir.
And we got this resolution on the file for you, so the deal is now, you have to smile.
She's smiling right here.
Well, let's get, I must be better at it.
My sister, that's a sister.
Well, that's better at it.
I'm my baby brother.
I'm your baby brother.
She looks like the baby. I ain't gonna, I'm not gonna get this boy, she's gonna win, I think. Do you get one?
Yep.
Are you smiling? Are you smiling, really?
Got you.
All right.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, boy. We wish you a bunch of love.
Thank you. You know, I see I'm a stoner, son.
Yeah, you gotta.
All right, so next, we have the Star.
Did y'all adopt that resolution? Did I miss that?
No, you didn't miss it. We didn't.
I need a motion to adopt the resolution so Allen can officially retire.
So moved.
Second.
Any discuss, you're good. Any discussion? We're talking about whether we're gonna let you retire or not. We're trying to decide. All in favor, say aye. All right, resolution's adopted. Thanks, Scott. Okay, so next, we have the Gold Star Award. Bring it up. Good evening.
The purpose of the Gold Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contribution to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The Star evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and/or accomplishments in customer service, problem-solving, teamwork, and community partnership. At this time, I would like for the nominees to come forward to present the May 2018 Star
This May 2018 Star Award goes to Kathy Hill. In the late winter, Kathy was approached by the town of Fremont. They were going under some new compliance changes in regards to their water reclamation facility and what they could discharge in their permit. So Kathy was approached to help them maintain compliance. They did not have a certified operator to run what's called low-level chlorine at their facility. So Kathy helped that operator get certified and allowed them to be, remain compliant with the state. And Kathy, Kathy is a laboratory supervisor at the water reclamation facility, and her job is, is all about integrity, and integrity is one of our core values with the city. Making sure that we're compliant, you know, not fudging a number here and there, it's so important. And Bert and I received an email from the state, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, from the state laboratory auditor, and I just wanted to read that, this to you. I want to acknowledge the invaluable assistance provided by Kathy Hill to the town of Fremont. Kathy went out of her way to help train the operator in order to help him obtain acceptable results for the proficiency test he needed for his certification. I've known Kathy for over the last year. It is a pleasure to work with her. You are fortunate to have her as an employee, and we all know that we're fortunate to have her, because she's the only one in the city that does her job, so we wanted to not.
Well, first off, I wanna thank you. I do wanna say, I think it's important to know that Kathy does not, did not have to do that. I mean, that's the level of professionalism, the level of courage we have, that they care about our sister communities. I'm sure they know Fremont didn't get any kind of bad light up, so she could've just easily just told the state, let the state handle it, but she helped them, and that's very kind, and I'm glad to hear you don't fudge the numbers, but you do, it's in our favor, okay? But that's good, and I'm more glad, I guess, I'm not sure if I'm glad or not glad to hear you're gonna let her do that, that's what we care. All right, but at least you can smile. I like that, okay?
Do you all, or just?
Yeah, come on, you can get that. Come on, Bert. You have your smile on, you have your smile on. Here, you probably want this. This is the one for the part. Okay, now we're gonna do the mayor's youth council senior presentations, community relations.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
I would just wanna first just thank you all for this opportunity. We do this every year. We honor our mayor youth council seniors that are graduating. This year, we had an outstanding group. I will say that the mayor gave us a charge, that he wanted us to be more active and engaged in the community, and do things that we hadn't done, and truly be youth ambassadors. And I wanted to commend all of the mayor youth council, not just the seniors, because they did just that, as well as Ms. Felicia Williams. She came in mid-season as our new community relations specialist and GYC advisor, and she's done an awesome job in accommodating all the needs and wants of the mayor and the community with the mayor youth council, and I really wanna commend her. As you all know, these kids are outstanding kids, just like the kids in our community, are very busy, active and engaging in other things. So we do not have all of the seniors here, but the ones that are here, we do want to take this time to honor them, and thank you for allowing that.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
It's been a great year for the youth council. I just wanna thank you, Mayor Allen, for being actively engaged and involved with the youth council, and being very visible with us throughout the community. Again, we've had five seniors to graduate this year, but we have one that's here with us tonight, and I'd like to call up Mr. Tyler Daniels. Tyler just graduated from Charles B. Acott High School. He's a member of, he was a member of the Charles B. Acott baseball team, and this fall, he'll be attending Winston-Salem State University on a full baseball scholarship, and he plans to study accounting and communications. So congratulations, Tyler.
Congratulations. Tyler, Tyler. My position.
Second, shortstop.
Very good.
You can get it over here.
That's good. Excellent. Good luck, dude.
Thank you.
Good job. Good looking young man. Good looking young man. Y'all can stay, Tommy, you didn't have anything to do tonight. Okay, Goldsboro Summer Learning Day proclamation. Is that why y'all are here? We got, okay. Just stay seated, I'm gonna read it, and I'll get it. I don't want you to stand up too long. Find it before I read about somebody retiring or something else. All right. Goldsboro Summer Learning Day proclamation. National Summer Learning Day is a day to celebrate the importance of keeping children learning safe and healthy all summer long, and ready to succeed in the school a year ahead. Whereas children can lose what they learn over the summer, known as summer slide, I thought that was something you went down that was wet, but anyway, the summer slide is a phenomenon that affects children who stop reading over the summer. Most students lose two months of math skills every summer, and children from low-income families typically lose another two or three months in reading. Summer learning loss during elementary school accounts for two-thirds of the achievement gap in, in reading between children from low-income families and their peers from middle-income families by ninth grade. Parents can help prevent summer slide, summer learning loss, by encouraging their children to read, and by reading with their children over the break, as this will help students to be ready to learn what's next in school. Whereas public agencies, community, and faith-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, and camps play an important and trusted role in the well-being of children through summer program. Whereas summer learning is a vital part of our collective effort to ensure all students are ready for school and reading on grade level by the end of the third grade for academic and lifelong success. Therefore, I check out as mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim July 12, 2018, as Summer Learning Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and I enthusiastically endorse the United Way of Wayne County's Read Wayne Summer Learning Day, and recommit our city to engage in programs and activities that make children in Goldsboro the best readers in North Carolina. That's very good. Now, Jacqueline. Mayor, y'all can come up. First off, do y'all have anything you'd like to say? Because I know, I know y'all, somebody's gonna talk.
On behalf of Reed Wayne, we'd like to thank you, Mayor, and our city council for your support for this proclamation for Summer Learning Day, the end July 12, 2018. And we'd like to thank our community partners as well.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Well, I think one thing's really important, two things we ought to take out of this, because one, we've already talked about a little bit tonight. The other problem, we wanna be sure, we have a lot of kids that aren't, the lower-income kids, that don't have access to food during the summer. There are a lot of feeding problems, we just gotta be sure we're getting to the, to get into the. The second thing is, I know without a fact, without doubt, is that education is the best equalizer for any of our children. And so we've gotta be sure, and I hear you every time, in the third grade, in high grade, but most times we lose, I mean, relationship with the, 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 so we appreciate what you do, and all the groups, and there's a lot of groups, and a lot of really good work in our community, so that's good. And I'm gonna get my picture taken, y'all, that's a good thing. All right, you home, bud? Hey. Oh, I'm gonna get serious out here right now. You just want to help. You got some of these on, sir?
Yes.
Donna, can you believe you're not talking? Well, I do wanna thank, thank y'all, and I do wanna take a minute to recognize Donna, because Donna does phenomenal work. She used to head a library here in Wayne County. She does phenomenal work with reading and education, so I know she's involved about every, maybe has anything to do with reading, so we appreciate what you do, y'all. All right, thank y'all.
Okay, that's the end of our presentations, and the next, we're gonna go to a public hearing. The first one is CU 418 Bobby Revis, south side of US 70, between 117 and Little River. So this is a conditional use, so that means to speak, you gotta be sworn in. So if anybody wants to speak, we'd like to swear you in at one time. So does anybody wanna speak on Bobby Revis? All right, so if nobody wants to speak, we'll go ahead and start the.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. CU 418 is Bobby Revis. This property is located on the south side of US 70 West, between US 117 and the Little River. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a used car lot. The property was previously occupied by Deacon Jones Nissan, which was a new car dealership, and the site contains an existing 17,700-square-foot building with a display area and offices at the front and service space at the rear. A six-foot-tall chain-link fence with privacy slats exists around the, or along the eastern and western property lines, and extend along those lines to a point at the front of the existing building. Two 30-foot-wide curb cuts provide full access in and out of the site. There is no space at the front of the site for installation of plant material without removal of existing asphalt, and vehicles will not be displayed in the right-of-way areas. The applicant has indicated that there may be up to 50 vehicles for display at this location, and in addition, the applicant has a wrecker service and may store two to three vehicles at the rear of the site, which will not be visible from the road. If this number increases, the applicant will be required to screen from the view. Hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Number of employees are two. The property is located within the 100-year floodplain for the Little River. If any new construction on the property is proposed, that must meet the city's flood damage prevention ordinance. And due to existing conditioning, conditions on the site, modifications of the landscaping requirements will be necessary. At this time, there is no action necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on July 16th. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, I'm gonna assume no one from the public wants to speak, but I will ask one.
I saw three hands back there.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, sir. Does anybody wanna speak? Nobody else, sir, you need to go right here, and she's gonna swear you in, okay?
Let's see which one you can hear right here.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Bobby Revis. I just, just all, y'all's hands, I reckon, you know, I'm like that.
Well, it's already been a car dealership.
Yes, it's been, yes, sir.
I don't see, it's, your planning commission's right there, so if you have anything you wanna tell them different, but I don't think we have any questions. We have no questions.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll close this public hearing and move to the next, which is item G, CU 518 Darrell Floors Motor Cars.
CU 518 Darrell Floors Motor Cars. This property is located on the south side of US 70 West, between US 117 and the Little River. The applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a used car lot. There's an existing 4,172-square-foot building on the lot, which was previously occupied by Performance East. The site surround, is surrounded by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence. Site and landscape plans were approved for Performance East by council in 2007, at the time in addition to the rear of the original building was proposed. Hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, with four employees. The applicant intends to display up to 25 vehicles on the existing paved area. One curb cut provides ingress and egress to the site. The property is located within the 100-year floodplain for the Little River. If any new construction on the property is proposed, it must meet the city's flood damage prevention ordinance. There are existing street trees at the front of the lot, and modifications were previously granted for the type A buffers along the eastern and western property lines, building setback, and interconnectivity. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on July 16th.
Any questions, Jennifer? Okay, this too is conditional use, so if anybody would like to speak, we gotta swear you in. So does anybody wants to speak? Anybody wants to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next. Item H, Z 918.
Z 918 is Wayne County Development Alliance. The property is located on the east side of Paitown Road, between North William Street and Stony Creek. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from R16 Residential to I2 General Industry. The surrounding zoning, to the north, you have O&amp;I, I2 General Industry; to the south, you have O&amp;I, R9 and R16 Residential; to the east, you have O&amp;I, R12 and R16 Residential; and to the west, you have R6, R16, Neighborhood Business, General Business, and O&amp;I. The city's comprehensive plan designates this property for medium-density residential development. The property is currently vacant farmland. The applicant is proposing the development of an industrial park, which will be subject to subdivision and site plan approval as development is proposed. City water and sewer lines are available to serve the property. There's an existing building occupied by TA Loving Company, along with an adjacent lot fronting on Paitown Road, which is not included within this zoning request. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on July 16th. Here are some shots of, of the property. This is the frontage along Paitown Road. You see TA Lovins to your, to the left. Again, just frontage from Paitown, and this shot is actually at the rear of TA Lovin for the remainder of the property. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing, Z 918. Would anybody like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
You don't need this one, man.
No, you don't need this one, it's not, it's not a conditional use.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Raymond Casey. I live at 706 Paitown Road. I have lived there for 42 years, and I've seen that area expand with residential housing, and I've seen nothing but traffic problems on the Paitown Road. The first question I have, is this property inside the city limits of Goldsboro, or is it in the extraterritorial jurisdiction?
I cannot, I don't know. It's in the city limits? She says it's in the city limits.
No, no, I'm pretty sure it is not in the city. The city limit surrounds it, it's in our.
ETJ.
Correct, it's in the territorial, but it's not in the city limits.
Thank you for stating that, because I have heartburn when the city annexed us, they cherry-picked us, and they overlooked all of this property, because at the time, they could not have annexed us, because there would have not been enough residences within the city, so they left it out. It has been residential, and it has been farmed just about the whole 46 years that I have lived there, and we don't wanna see any more industry. We have enough industry in that area. Can anybody tell us what's being planned to be placed on that property if it is approved to go from residential?
I don't think so, not today.
I, I just don't see how you can, you can change something if you don't have any idea of what's gonna be placed on that property. One of the other questions that I have is, why were only a handful of people in the Spring subdivision in that area notified? Out of the 12 or 14 people that live in that subdivision, only four people were notified.
I can answer why.
Yes, sir.
And if I get it wrong, the attorney or, they'll, the, the law is that we have to make contact with anybody, we do, we do two things. We put a public notice, you saw a sign out there on Paitown Road, 'cause I'm sure you've seen it, 'cause I've seen it, and that we have to contact the immediate property owner. So probably somebody that lived there adjoining this property, I see four or five lots right there, so they would've gotten notice. So, 'cause who we, who we notify are the adjoining property owners, the immediate adjoining property owners. That's what the law tells us to do.
That may be the law, but it doesn't seem quite fair to people that live in that area that do not have any idea of what's going on.
And that's kinda why we put the sign out there on, at least, like you, they never asked questions, but.
Well, I got a letter. Had I not got a letter, I probably would not have asked a question.
Right.
Thank you for answering that question. Now, I'd like to address the traffic problem in that area. From 7:45 to 8:30 in the morning, and from 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, you cannot get on the Paitown Road because of all the traffic that is there. The traffic's trying to come off of Industry Court, it's coming off of William Street. This is not your problem, but I hope you will allow me to express what I think has caused a lot of this traffic issue, is the fact when the state closed Tommy's Road, and there's nothing for folks to get to the hospital, so they're coming down Industry Court. I cannot tell you how many times I've almost been involved in an accident, because people get anxious. They sit at that intersection, waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, and they just get frustrated, and they'll pull out in front of traffic, thinking that the traffic's gonna stop. This industry's gonna add more traffic. You gentlemen just approved a concrete plant to go on the corner of Industry Court and Paitown Road. That's gonna generate even more traffic. It's just a bad situation in that area as far as traffic goes, and we do not want this industry to come in there and put additional traffic, especially since we have no earthly idea what's going in there. Am I limited to time, Mayor? I, I didn't wanna overstep my bounds.
You're good to go, sir.
Well, I think that I have touched on just about everything I wanted to touch on, with the exception of one other item, which has been pushed on this particular area as well, and I know the city doesn't have anything to do with it, but it's a waste treatment pumping station, which is directly in front of my house, and I know that it's the waste that comes from Fremont. This time of the year, we can't even walk outside without smelling sewage, and it is absolutely awful. And I've talked to people with the city, and they'll go out there and put some type of, that it's a smell-good something that's supposed to take the odor out, and it'll last maybe four weeks, and it comes right back again. And, and I think that we've just been imposed upon so much in that area that we don't wanna see this industry. And, and I, I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening to me. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Well, I'll send you two comments. I think that's our pumping station, and, and if it does what you said, we can certainly look at it and see what we can do to make that better. We oughta be able to make that better. You shouldn't have something that you're smelling at your house, I don't think.
I don't think any of y'all would wanna smell that.
Yeah, and then secondly, there is a project that we're working on and endorsing to open Tommy's Road back up. It might be a few years down the road, but I know that we're pushing hard to get Tommy's Road, but, so hopefully that'll help you long-term, so we are working on that, just so you know.
I have to leave, go to work, an hour before I'm due, just 'cause I can't get out I have to leave, go to work an hour before I'm due, just because I can't get out of the driveway.
What you were asking was...
706 Paitown Road.
So, you're right between Spring, um, Spring Street and the...
The creek.
The creek, right there.
I'm right there on the creek.
All right.
And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your...
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Mayor Allen, council members, Mr. Stevens, and the planning committee members. Um, I'm Tiffany Creach, and I'm the interim president with the Wayne County Development Alliance. And I would like to thank you for considering our request to rezone the property now known as the Goldsboro Industrial Campus. We believe rezoning is necessary at this point in order to start the development process for the property. I would also like to thank you, um, and this city, for your willingness to partner with our organization and with the county of Wayne to develop this property as a new industrial park. This is a very exciting endeavor, and one that will no doubt position Wayne County ahead of other communities in our ability to attract companies looking for available sites close to our great interstate corridors. Economic development is a very competitive business. We are competing with other states with communities just like Wayne County, so the more tools we have in our toolbox in the way of available sites and buildings, the more marketable we are to potential clients. We are excited about the development of the Englesboro Industrial Campus. We're excited about its location, its potential for new and expanding industries, and our partnership with the city to advance economic development within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak?
Are we allowed to speak a second?
No, sir. Anybody else like to speak? All right, we will close this public hearing, and that's the end of our public hearings. We want to thank the planning commission for all you do, thank you for coming tonight. And I think y'all meet on this coming Monday? So, what? Oh, you meet right now? What do I know?
The council meeting was...
Oh, okay, that's fine. Okay, so y'all going to meet right now. So, so, um, to anybody here, if you have any interest, you can go in with them and listen to them. You can't speak, but you can go listen. If you're, they're gonna be in the room next door.
Mr. Casey, during the public comment section, you can speak again for three minutes.
All right, so the planning commission, excuse me, now we're going to the public comment section, so Mr. Casey, if you want to speak, you can come speak for three minutes. You are timed this time. That's perfect.
One other thing that I wanted to ask, that I failed to write down, is this is the county that is pushing this, is my question.
The, the, this is the county, the county is, is, is the owner of the property, and they are driving this, the project. The city is participating with the county in providing utilities, so we would be partners with the county in, in that, in, in all this, because we're the ones providing the water and sewer to the project.
I guess my question then should probably be directed to the county commissioners. They've got all this land out here on Highway 70 that they've had for the better part of thirty years, and they can't get it developed, so they want to come into town and develop the place that it is.
I'm gonna let you ask them about that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you allowing me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great night.
You, too.
All right, anybody else like to speak from the audience, for a public up to three minutes? Anybody wants to, yes, sir? Good evening.
Good evening, councilman and mayor.
Good evening.
City manager. I just have a question. Um, I sent in a request to be on the agenda tonight, and I never received a response. What is the procedure?
You would send the request to our, to the clerk, Laura Melissa, but I'm, I'm not aware of the request, so I...
Well, I sent it to a Ms. Gertz.
Yes.
Gertz?
My name is...
That would be you? Okay, my name is Bill Sutton, uh, from Keys to Healing Organization. Didn't get it? Okay.
Was it email or a letter?
It was an email. Okay.
They're usually pretty good about asking when they get it, so...
Yeah, I mean, I didn't get a response, but I just assumed, I said, well, maybe I'm just supposed to come in and, uh, okay, well, I guess I, well, I need more than three minutes, so I'll try that again if you, uh, can let me have a business call.
How long do you need?
Probably ten.
You better get on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll try to send that in again, that need the same. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak from the public? Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment, um, time, move to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda, you removed, uh, item I, so you have J through N. Again, your consent agenda is items J through N.
Move to adopt the consent agenda, items J through N.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, any discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor for Tiffany?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Uh, items requiring interval action, there are none. City may have a report?
Uh, no report this evening, ma'am.
No report? All right, so we'll move to mayor and council. I got two resolutions. Um, the first one is Resolution 201830, Resolution expressing appreciation for service rendered by Virgil Rouse, as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than fourteen years. Virgil retires on July 1st, 2018, as a wastewater plant operator three, with the Public Utilities Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than fourteen years of service. Virgil began his career on August 27th, 2003, as a wastewater plant operator one with the Public Utilities Department. On August 27th, 2005, Virgil's position was reclassified to a wastewater plant operator two within the Public Utilities Department. On January 8th, 2014, Virgil's position was reclassified to wastewater plant operator three with the Public Utilities Department, where he has served until his retirement. Virgil has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant, who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor, the city council, and the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Virgil their deep appreciation and gratitude for service rendered to him by the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor, city council, and city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Virgil's tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Virgil our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health to his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force effect from this to 25th day of June, 2018. I offer this for adoption. So, do you got... All right, any discussion? All favor raise your hand. Opposing, motion carry, or resolution carries, and we appreciate all Virgil's dedication and wish him the best in his retirement. Next, we have a Resolution 201832, expressing appreciation to Colonel Chris Sage, commander of Fourth Fighter Wing. Whereas Colonel Christopher Sage has served as commanding officer of the Fourth Fighter Wing located Seymour Johnson Air Force Base since July 2016. Colonel Sage has faithfully supported the mission of Seymour Johnson, and has been an advocate for his airman, airmen. These two years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the better of this economic, education, cultural, and aesthetic development. Colonel Sage began an adoption airmen program. The program connects airmen with local families to make them feel more at home, while connecting the families with the mission of Seymour Johnson. Under the command of Colonel Sage, the base has welcomed two thousand six hundred nineteen grade school students, mostly from Wayne County, onto the base for tours over the last year. The number was nearly, nearly zero when Colonel Sage first arrived. Colonel Sage was instrumental in the disaster response in Goldsboro during Hurricane Matthew, offering based resources and personnel to assist in rescue operations and floodproofing of the city's water treatment plant. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that the mayor and city council express to you, Colonel Christopher Sage, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and citizens, our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish devoted and valuable service and contributions rendered to the city of Goldsboro. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force effect from and after this to 25th day of June, 2018. I offer this for adoption.
Moving.
Any discussion? All favor say aye, or raise your hand. Opposing, motion carries. All right, and I'll present that to him a little bit later on. Uh, we'll move to board member comments, councilmember, um, Williams.
No comment.
Councilmember Broadway.
No comment, sir.
Councilmember Stevens.
I have a couple. Um, I'd like to say, uh, and send out my, uh, warmest condolences to the Hill family, Ms. Helen Hill, um, spouse to Chester Hill, uh, first African-American, uh, police officer and chief of Goldsboro, North Carolina. She passed away, um, last week, and her funeral was this past Saturday, so I send a heartfelt, uh, condolences to her whole family. And I want to also commend Ms. Kenzie Hinson, um, who is at, who's over the Make a Difference Food pantry in Mount Olive, because she was being recognized by, uh, making, uh, repaying the debt on, uh, Facebook and on television, and telling the world about what's going on in her life, and how she affects the lives of so many people in the city of Mount Olive, and then also in the city of Goldsboro, by feeding people the first and third, uh, Sundays of the month, and then also, um, open up her food pantry to individuals, whether they're homeless or just educated, and they cannot find a job, because it's hard to find a job nowadays, and she feeds everyone, so I wanted to say, you know, good work, good job, and congratulations for that, um, deed. Also, I just wanted to say to our property owners, and, and also to our individuals out there making a way in the life, in the way in the world. I've seen several property owners and businesses closed at the moment, and I've kind of, it's kind of worried, worried me, but I wanted to say to you, each and all of you, that we take this one little small step in the way of the young lady, and try to help us each other, then we won't destroy ourselves, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
No comment.
No comment.
All right, I got a few. First, I want to, uh, offer our condolences and prayers to the former Fremont Mayor's family, Andy Evans. Andy, uh, was, been deceased a week or so now, and, uh, really a tragic loss. Andy was just a great, great person, a great community person, so we certainly want to remember Andy. Secondly, I want to mention that this past week, uh, several of us went to Washington, DC, on behalf of Goldsboro and Seymour Johnson. We met with the Secretary of the Air Force, uh, we did a lot of, uh, with our congressmen, senators, and, uh, just, just advocating for flood victims, advocating for military transportation, um, but we had a really good meeting, and hopefully some, some fruits of the labor will come out over that. Uh, thirdly, um, WA Foster, the old WA Foster on Leslie Center, we, we talked tonight, uh, we, we're trying to name it, and we've had the options of the TC Coley Center. Uh, Mr. Coley was instrumental years ago in this center, and the gym there has already been named after him, and the Leslie Street Center, which makes it kind of more of the community, I guess. Uh, but councilmember Williams had a great idea of just doing sort of a, a poll of the community over there, and really any citizen, so you'll see that coming out, and I just want to make everybody aware of it, that that is coming. Um, I do want to say, I, I just read the resolution for Colonel Sage, but I do want to say that on July 3rd, we have his change of command. He'll be leaving, him and his family. Uh, they've been phenomenal partners here, and we'll have Colonel Yates come in, and I'm sure him and his family will be phenomenal as well. And then, lastly, uh, I want to just talk about agriculture for a minute. I was invited a couple of weeks ago to Raleigh, to speak to the House Agriculture Committee about the importance of agriculture and the right of the farm bill. And I know today, they had a big, uh, I guess, what do you call it, Ron, a meeting, a big, they had a rally. A big rally about agriculture, and you're supposed to wear green. I missed that memo. Ron must have got the memo, because he's got it on green today, but we couldn't go because we're here. But I do want, I think it's important for, for, I didn't know some of this, so I just